Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It's 7:55, the 28th day of June. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Kopas, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary; Mr. Leo J. Smith, Jr., Assistant Superintendent for Business; Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction; and Mr. Mitchell Piscual, Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finnerty.
Present.
Trustee Garillic.
Present.
Trustee Lawanda.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Here.
Yep.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
Okay, I'm gonna start tonight's meeting by going out of order. I'd like to go first to Resolution Number 96. And this is a commendation. Whereas Woodrow Wilson, community school teacher and students, have brought honor and distinction to the Bayonne schools while participating in the Panasonic Eco Citizenship Program. Whereas students Jacqueline Barrios, Isabella Collage, Faith Harrison, and Sierra Miller, and educator Larissa Drennan are being recognized for being awarded first place in the Panasonic Eco Diary, uh, Dairy, I'm sorry, Eco Diary Challenge, sponsored by the Panasonic North American and the Foundation for Impact for Literacy and Learning. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the leadership and contributions of these students and their teacher, therefore be it resolved that this Board of Education wishes its heartfelt congratulations to Larissa, Jacqueline, Isabella, Faith, and Sierra Miller.
Here.
Here. Sorry about that. I think there's kids.
Let the Union chair. Larissa, would you please come forward? Mrs. Drennan and also our students. Let's see if they're ready. (applause) I'm very proud of these students and the direction and supervision of Mrs. Drennan and Larissa. And Mrs. Brown, please come up. And Tara Degnan, the Director of Science, please come forward.[261.14][261.14](applause) We're very proud of our students to win this wonderful award, and I know that they were bestowed some very, very special gifts, weren't they? So go ahead and tell the audience what they received.
Well, they got to visit the Panasonic headquarters, and they met with all the executives. They presented their project to all the other teams. And the grand prize was they won stereos and headphones.
Nice.
Wireless system. So they were very excited about that. And they deserved it after all their hard work. We spent a whole year on it.[301.12][301.12](applause)
So we know you're gonna be doing all summer, right? Enjoying your gifts. Well, congratulations, and I hope this is the beginning of what you need to do going forward. So, great job, and we're very, very proud of you as a Board of Education and also Central Office Administration. I know you're a director, you're a principal, I know they share also, and we are proud of all the fine work that you've done. So we'd like to take a picture, and all these students will be here. So come on up and join us. Have a seat. Pick whichever one you want. Who wants to be the president?[344.12][344.12](laughter) I didn't get the seat. You're gonna take that.[347.12][347.12](laughter) Congratulations. 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 Great job. Thank you so much. Okay.
They wanna put a back table. Hey, trustee.
What are we doing?
That's it.
That's it.
The awards?
That is it. I'll read the rest. That's the only group of students that are here.
I'm sorry. No, it's me.
Okay. Once again, I'd like to go out of order. Non-consent agenda, Number 109. And I will re, I'll read that, Resolution 109. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has reached an agreement with the City of Bayonne to enter into an inter-local agreement for a shared prescription plan program. Therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education enter into the attached inter-local service agreement with the City of Bayonne for a shared prescription plan program. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
I'll second that motion.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith. We do have a representative here. Hold on one second, and I'll get your microphone. This way, if there are questions from the audience.
Yes, in partnership with the city in order to save money, we've entered a shared local agreement. Our broker, Spabview Associates, came to us, and there's a representative here tonight. Tamisha Smith from, I'm gonna call her up to the podium. She'll give a rundown of the shared prescription services and the potential for the savings from the district. So Tamisha, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
(inaudible). Okay. Everybody's ready to listen. All right. Okay. Woo! That was an eye-opener. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Board, for having me here. And Mr. Smith, again, the, what was presented as far as the inter-local agreement for shared services between the City of Bayonne and the Bayonne Board of Ed presents a potential savings of at least $400,000 to approximately $1.5 million, and that's based on a collective agreement between the city as well as the Board of Ed. So the city having approximately 630 employees and the Board of Ed with approximately 930, 930 employees. Currently, the city is with vendor card, and the Board of Ed prescription coverage is with the New Jersey State Health Benefits Plan. What was presented will provide immediate cost savings not only to the district but to the employees based on their Chapter 78 rates. As we all know, coming into 2017, the Board of Ed received an 11.1% increase on their prescription costs, and what has been presented provides a cost savings at a minimum of 3%, which can be delivered to, as well as I indicated, the employees through their Chapter 78 contributions. That savings would be immediate by allowing the state of New Jersey adequate notice of 60 days' notice if you choose to move forward as of September 1st. Additionally, the New Jersey State Health Benefit Plan renewal rates for January 2018 do come out or will be released by July 12th, and that will make you guys aware of what that renewal is. But at this point, it would be an opportunity for you to provide savings immediately and also avert the renewal that is coming up for January 2018. The benefits that are being presented are exactly the same benefits that are in place. There will, however, be a change in vendor or prescription vendor, so that means that there could be a slight change in the formulary that people have with the current prescription vendor, which is Express Grips. But with that being said, the Board of Ed wants to make sure that there is no disruption and a smooth transition. So if there is a change in formulary from a drug that a person is currently taking, they will be able to get a complimentary refill of the current drug, have them notified as well as their physician, to make sure that they have the opportunity to select a new drug within that same clinical category. The copays remain the same that are act, that they have right now with the state.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In regard to your last comment on that, the formulary, even though they have an opportunity to change to the new formulary, what happens if that patient or that Board of Ed member says, "I can't take that drug. I've tried it in the past. I'm allergic to it," doesn't do the same job? May they stay with their original prescription?
Well, right. So, right now, at the state level, there is what is called step therapy, which is already in place. So that means that if a person is prescribed a medication and they can't take it or it doesn't provide them the results that the doctor's looking for, then they look to move to the next medication. If they already have taken that medication that would be on the formulary, that would be noted in their clinical file with their physician, they would be able to provide a prior authorization to then move to whatever the next, whatever the next drug was in that clinical category if they've already taken that drug in the past.
How did you come up with the estimate of $400,000 to 1.5?
That it's based on your current utilization with the, with the State Health Benefits Plan. But again, we don't know your actual detailed claims data because it is a fully insured plan, so there is gonna be a funding arrangement change. So that reduces by 20% the admin cost because you would be changing to a self-funded program versus a fully insured program that you have right now. So that allot for immediate 20% of administrative savings for you.
May I make one other comment? I don't need that. I think you'll hear me. I just wanna thank Chris Patel for finding, identifying, and bringing to the Board an opportunity to do something like this, and it's not forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeAngelo?
Please, this way we can hear you.
I'm curious to know why, Mr. Broderick, that you didn't come to the union about this. I knew nothing about it until tonight. You're gonna change the prescription coverage, not the coverage, the carrier. You didn't even notify us. So now we gotta look into it however we can to make sure this is all legitimate, and you're just doing it. You're not allowed to change. You're allowed to change if it's equal to or better than, but I don't know that. You didn't give me an opportunity to look into it. I don't know what the secrets are, that you don't come forward and say, "We're looking to save some money with a new prescription plan." I don't understand what the young lady just said. They're changing the formula on certain drugs because that's what that plan covers? We don't want it changed. That's a change. Now, what are we gonna try to figure out? If it's just as good or you get, I don't, we don't need preapproval. That's the words I heard. We don't get a preapproval. If we have a prescription for the drug, it's covered under our plan. So all these things should've been looked into by the Board before you agreed to anything. You're passing the resolution tonight. So you're gonna, you may be, you may enter into a contract tonight with this carrier and find out there's a problem. What do you do then? Oh, we didn't check? That's how you lose $6 million. Nobody checks. I'm not being sarcastic. I'm pretty upset that you went and just changed our prescription plan without telling us. I represent 900 people in this prescription plan. I don't know if you know what's gonna happen. And I don't wanna find out after you write a con, after you sign a contract. I think you should table this.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Alan, what the Board has in this agreement is what's called an equal to or better letter.
I mentioned that.
We are guaranteed that the new program is gonna be equal to or better than the existing program. And with respect to the formulary, the formularies that we currently have in the state program, same as any other prescription program, are an ever-changing product. The formularies, just like the networks and the health plan, change from month to month to month. And it's conceivable that the state plan could change, whether it could be changed here, and that's why there's the grace period, and that's why there's the procedure in the event the new formulary isn't appropriate for the patient. And if we delayed it, we'd lose an opportunity for one-month savings.
Is the, the savings of $400,000 to $1.5 million per year?
That's the savings, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, that's the savings for both the city and the Board of Education, and we would get our pro-rated share of that.
Well, this, I heard mentioned there's 900 and some members of the Board in that plan and 100 and something in the.
600.
600 and something in the city.
Approximately.
How is there only 900 out of the Board of Ed? Only the teachers and secretaries of my unit are in this?
No. No, we cover everyone in the Board who's eligible or who takes the benefit. Some people obviously don't take the benefit because then they don't incur a contribution towards it.
And where's the savings gonna go?
The savings is gonna go into the budget.
May I make a comment, please? Mr. DeAngelo?
To your point, this Board was informed at a very, very thorough explanation at last week's workshop. So had other people been there, they would've been informed and had the opportunity to ask any questions you wanted of Ms. Smith. But that's when we, we found out, and at that time, that's when I found out, anyway. I can't speak for everybody else on the Board, and at that time, it sounded pretty, a pretty good move financially for this Board to make. But it was explained fully a week ago to everybody who was in this room at the workshop.
The last workshop I went to, Ms. Finnerty, I couldn't ask any questions.
Yes, but you could hear the discussion.
Yeah, I would like it on paper. I'd like to be notified. If I had been notified that you were gonna discuss a new prescription plan at that workshop, I would've been here. Most of the time at the workshop, things that I am concerned with are all discussed in closed session. It's all personnel you do behind closed doors, right?
Not at this workshop. That's when we heard about that.
Well, yes, but if I had gotten a note from somebody, Mr. Broderick, anybody, that the Board is considering changing the prescription plan for your members, and it will be discussed at the workshop on such and such today, I would've been here.
Point taken.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for, yes, Ms. Patel?
Just real quick, Chris Patel. Not that I need to defend this Board, but, Mr. DeAngelo, there was probably at least three separate meetings that I discussed this plan with this Board dating back to probably six or seven months ago. Certainly, that would've been an ample opportunity for you to confront me or anybody else with regard to this plan. In addition to the savings that was estimated, there was also a savings in Leo, Mr. Smith, if I'm not correct, by the decision to switch to this other broker, there were some other savings of about $150,000.
$150,000 directly to the Board of Education.
And then if you take the pro-rata share of the $400,000 to a million, million, four, what, million five, that the cit, that the Board would get, my thought is that, you know, the best thing about it is that hopefully this Board will bring back some of the teachers that were laid off not too long ago. So I think it's a good thing for your union.
I would hope they'd put the money on the table and bargain for savings.
Any other questions?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on Resolution 109.
I have a question. Just I have a question about the plan.
Sure.
Will employees be able to go in and get the same prescription? Like, if they get a script from their doctor, will they be able to go in and get that at any pharmacy, long-term, or will they have to be forced to go to mail? That sort of thing.
Right. Thank you for asking that question. The state, the school board right now, through the state of New Jersey, does not have mandatory mail order where local government, through the State Health Benefits Plan, does. So mandatory mail order will not be implemented because that's not what they have right now. That's on the local government side. So the vendor Pro Act currently works with the City of Orange. They work with the County of Mercer. They work with my touch-in Board of Ed, and those are just three of my specific clients that I could name to you, and I did provide the equal to or better-than letter as well as their list of references as well. So it would be the State Health Benefits Plan booklet that has been provided, which is public information on the Pension and Treasury website, is the booklet that has been provided to Pro Act to match the benefits specifically as they have them here.
Okay, so they won't be, the employees for the Board of Ed will not be subject to any rules that the municipal employees are currently.
Right. The school, the school districts have a different benefit than local government at the State Health Benefits Plan. So the booklet that's provided by the state are the benefits that are being adopted and duplicated. Now, if there is a small mom-and-pop pharmacy that may not be part of your major chain networks, Walgreens, CVS, Rite, Stop &amp; Shop, Target, they can, you know, they can call to petition to have them participate, but in most cases, all of the pharmacies participate. In the City of Orange, we had one pharmacy that did not participate. It was the VA Hospital, and that's because they have their own dispensary, so they would not become a member of the network.
Okay. Thank you.
I need a clarification. Right now, our plan says the 90-day maintenance drugs, it has to be mailed over. Would that continue?
Whatever is in, I'm sorry. Whatever is in the State Health Benefits Plan booklet is what's being adopted.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second in Resolution 109. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Patel for all the work he's done on this program. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I'll go back to our regular resolutions. I'll start with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, our Resolutions 1 through 84. All our resolutions this evening are on the bulletin board. So on our consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And then do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Patel for all the work he's done on this program. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I'll go back to our regular resolutions. I'll start with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, our Resolutions 1 through 84. All our resolutions this evening are on the bulletin board. So on our consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And then do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Patel for all the work he's done on this program. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I'll go back to our regular resolutions. I'll start with our consent agenda. Our consent agenda, our Resolutions 1 through 84. All our resolutions this evening are on the bulletin board. So on our consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And then do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Resolution passed. 98. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education, Hudson County, New Jersey, has determined that it is required to educate a Bayonne resident student, AT, currently determined to be homeless and hobo. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has determined the student is enrolled and hobo in Board of Education and is hereby required to pay for tuition and related expenses. Therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education that the Board President be and is hereby authorized to execute the as-for said contract, and the Assistant Superintendent is authorized to issue a purchase order. On behalf of the Bayonne Board of Education, be it further resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education that the agreement shall be deemed to be effective commencing on January 27, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second.
I second.
So on that motion and second on Resolution 98. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
I have to respectfully abstain.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Resolution 99. Whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments to meet the current operating needs of the school district. Therefore be it resolved that it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that the below-named personnel be transferred, reassigned to the position listed next to their name. Be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to transfer, reassign the personnel listed below on the effective dates. Carantreons from a 10-month secretary to a 12-month secretary, effective July 1, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second? And do I have a second? That is, second?
Yes, I second that motion.
Thank you. Motion and second on Resolution 89. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
I'm sorry, 99. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
That's a yes. Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
I'm staying in conflict.
Okay. Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
Resolution passed. 98. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education, Hudson County, New Jersey, has determined that it is required to educate a Bayonne resident student, AT, currently determined to be homeless and hobo. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education has determined the student is enrolled and hobo in Board of Education and is hereby required to pay for tuition and related expenses. Therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education that the Board President be and is hereby authorized to execute the as-for said contract, and the Assistant Superintendent is authorized to issue a purchase order. On behalf of the Bayonne Board of Education, be it further resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education that the agreement shall be deemed to be effective commencing on January 27, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second.
I second.
So on that motion and second on Resolution 98. Trustee Cruden. Trustee Munoz?
Have to respectfully abstain.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 99, whereas the Board of Education finds it necessary to make administrative adjustments and reassignments to meet the current operating needs of the school district, therefore be it resolved that it is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that the below-named personnel be transferred, reassigned to the position listed next to their name, be it further resolved that this Board of Education approve the recommendations made by the Superintendent of Schools to transfer, reassign the personnel listed below on the effective dates. Current trions from a 10-month secretary to a 12-month secretary, effective July 1st, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second? That is, second?
Yes, I second that motion.
Thank you. Motion and second on Resolution 89, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
It's 99.
I'm sorry, 99. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
That's a yes. Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 100, whereas it's been determined that staff is needed to undertake and complete several school district activities, whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended the following persons be assigned to the attached programs, be it hereby resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis, and at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on the school district's needs. This is for the extended school year, E.S.Y. Resolution 100 on that back bulletin board, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Munoz?
Trustee Munoz? Motion?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Trustee, second?
I second.
Thank you, Trustee Desmond. So we have a motion and second on Resolution 100. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain of conflict.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 101, whereas it's been determined that staff is needed to undertake and complete several school district activities, whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended the following persons be assigned to the attached program, therefore be it resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis and at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on the school district's needs, this is for foreign language. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Abstain.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
102, it's been determined that staff is needed to undertake and complete several school district activities, whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended the following personnel, persons to be assigned to the attached programs, be it hereby resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on the school district needs, and this is guidance counseling. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
Second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 103, I'll go to the end, be it resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on the school district needs, this is for nurses. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Abstain of conflict.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
104, be it resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on school district needs, this is for secretaries, 104. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Abstain.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
105, be it hereby resolved, resolved that the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on school district needs, this is for summer security. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
106, be it hereby resolved the attached name personnel are appointed on a per diem basis and at the salaries listed for summer programs and projects based on school district needs, summer performance arts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'd like to make a comment on this, that this is the summer performance program of the Beauty and the Beast, I believe, and Mr. Smith, will you verify that $8,700 has already been paid to the board, and the rest of the expense are of no cost to the Board of Education?
Absolutely, Mr. Garrett, we received a check today from the fundraising office of the performance arts, that with the tuition will more than cover the performances, the orchestra, and anything associated with this production.
Thank you.
And they do a great job, you know.
They sure do.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and second on 106. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes, and good luck.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
I'd just like to thank the Bayonne Parents Association and all the other parent associations actually fundraised for this endeavor, so thank you very much, yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes, break the leg.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Resolution 107, whereas the Bayonne Board of Education authorized, committee conducted a hearing regarding students AMU, AU, JU, and SU's entitlement to a free and public education in Bayonne. Whereas on June 22nd, 2017, the Board of Education heard testimony and considered evidence presented by the Board Administration and the mother of students AMU, AU, JU, and SU during that hearing. Whereas having considered the testimony and evidence presented by the Board Administration and the mother of students AMU, AU, JU, and SU, the Board has determined that the parents of AMU, AU, JU, and SU do not properly reside within the city of Bayonne, so as to establish the necessary residence as required pursuant to Title 18A of the New Jersey statutes. Whereas it appears that at best, AMU, AU, JU, and SU's mother has been a sporadic guest of Bayonne residents, and the children have never resided in Bayonne. Therefore, be it resolved that students AMU, AU, JU, and SU are hereby removed from the Bayonne public school system for failing to maintain the requisite residency as required by Title 18A of the New Jersey statutes. Be it further resolved that the Board Attorney is directed to serve the necessary notice to the students' parents advising them of their rights of an appeal within 21 days of the date of the notice, and of other issues required to be provided pursuant to New Jersey statutes and regulations. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I second.
So on a motion and a second on Resolution 107, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
108, whereas there is a need for credit recovery staff in the Bayonne School District to the Bayonne High School Credit Recovery Program for 2017, be it resolved that the following personnel listed below will serve as credit recovery staff based upon enrollment and as needed. This is Resolution 108 on the back bulletin board, do I have a motion?
I motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Abstain.
Trustee Finnerty?
I think before I vote, I would like everybody in the audience to understand that the way this reads, it gives the impression that all of these people will be employed. It's not that way. It is as needed. So in fact, we may just need two history teachers, however, they may call in sick, and the other teachers that are listed here will be called in on a substitute basis. So all these people that you see listed are not going to each be paid $75 per session, it's not that way. I just want everybody, when you look at it, it looks like we're hiring all these people. We're not. We're hiring as many teachers that are required, and if a teacher is absent, this is the pool from which we pull a teacher to put in in that situation. So on that, I vote yes.
Trustee Garrett?
Abstain.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
109, we did, which leaves me with our last resolution, number 110. Whereas current contracts of the below-named custodians are to expire, whereas the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patricia L. McGeehan, has recommended that new contracts be tendered, therefore be it resolved that the below-named custodians are hereby appointed for a period indicated after their respective names and as per the contracts here too. This is Resolution 110 on our back bulletin board, I won't read the rest of it. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Abstain.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawanda?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck?
Yes, with pleasure.
President Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. President, that is it for resolutions, but I do have some index cards that were filled out, I'll let you...
Okay, while we get to the cards, just one or two things I'd like to comment on tonight. One is that, actually a couple that we're losing, one is a lady that's behind the scenes most of the time, most usually we never see her, but for the board, and she just does a tremendous amount of work, here all the time. Her name is Teresa Curran, she's up there, you might see her at meetings, people that come, but she's leaving us in a couple of days, and she's gonna be sorely missed. She's been tremendous, always a smile, in fact, some days when I came here, she might have been the only smile. But personally, I know I'm gonna miss her a lot, and I wish you all the best. The other comment I'd like to make tonight is that everybody knows what it, just by being a citizen, you'd understand what a difficult job being a superintendent would be. So I knew that that way. Then when you work for the Board of Education, which I worked for, then you realize how much even harder that job is. And then, I happened to be put on the Board of Ed, and luckily made president, some days I'm lucky. But then you realize how extremely hard that position is, and how demanding. I'm talking about a job that's basically 24/7, I'm talking about a job that includes every night, weekends, and probably just about every holiday. I can attest to that, I never realized just how difficult that position was, working with her on that basis. I just wanted to say that I know this last year has been a little bit difficult, but her energy and dedication, and what she's brought to the city and to the Board of Education is just phenomenal. I'd also like to say that I know this year, that, you know, she took, I think, some shots that really she stood up to and handled very well, but it just wasn't right, a lot of times it was just inappropriate, and most of the time, I think, many of the statements were just basically untrue. So I just wanna say that, from a personal note, that I will miss, and I think she did a tremendous job, Dr. McGeehan.
President Broderick, I think we probably all would like to say something, show down the line. Thank you very much, Mr. Broderick. Good evening to everyone. They say all good things must end someday, for me, that would be Friday. I have been blessed beyond measure to serve as the educational leader of one of the most exceptional communities in New Jersey for the past 17 years. I have loved and cherished my work and the relationships built with our amazing students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, faith leaders, business leaders, and elected officials over the years. I want to publicly thank all the school board members, especially those who hired me, for giving me the opportunity to serve Bayonne community and supporting the decisions made during my administration. Together with the caring and committed staff, we have shaped one of the highest quality education institutions in the state, one that we can all be proud of. I also want to thank the many parents and community members who helped me over the years with all of this work. And the final one I want to thank is one of knowledge, the leaders of central office, that's Mr. Copaz on my left, Dr. Dagman on my left, Mr. Smith, who were there, and also I cannot forget Mr. Craig, who I worked with for many, many years, even longer than the tenure of these three gentlemen. They've served as part of my team over the years, and they hold very difficult jobs, ladies and gentlemen, you may not realize it, but they are. And they require creative talents to find solutions that cannot just be found in a textbook. These leaders are very good people, and who I respect and I enjoyed working with on a daily basis. I don't know how much they enjoyed working with me, because I'm a taskmaster and I had to drive these gentlemen a little crazy. And finally, thank you very much for allowing me to serve the city of Bayonne. I wish only the very best for our children, who are so deeply involved with me, and how much I love them, and that's been my vocation for many, many years. And also, the employees, all of our teachers, our educators, our administrators, who have followed all the dreams and visions that we have put out here for the city. So I will continue to be your biggest fan, and I just wish everyone well, and good luck to the new interim superintendent. Thank you very much.
Trustee Desmond, I feel you'd like to say something.
It's near impossible to convey the amount of hard work and dedication that comes from the team around us, and certainly from ourselves, all the teachers, all the parents and the parent groups, but this lady has lived and breathed the Bayonne District Board of Education. You cannot, I just don't know that anybody's gonna fill your shoes the same way in terms of going to every event, never missing anything, celebrating every child every time she had
every time she had an opportunity, getting through some tough times by building incredible relationships within the community, business community, and making things happen here by warding off any threat. And there's been several of charter schools coming into this district because we were able to put together programs that benefited our children. I just wanna say thank you. I do appreciate everything you've done. It did not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerlinger.
Patsy, as we fondly call you, I just wanted to mention one simple statement that you set the example by your conduct, your behavior, your creativity, your innovativeness, and to think since two thousand and nine, this district has not been funded to what we should be and how you implemented many programs to make it work. Thank you very much for your dedication and we will miss you.
Just to give you an idea of how difficult Dr. McGinn's job can be and how well she can do it, as a desk lieutenant, I had the responsibility to call her and tell her that we had a credible bomb threat inbound high school at three o'clock in the morning. That's not exactly an easy thing to deal with when you're supposed to be sound asleep. To her credit, she handled it well. She took our advice and nobody was hurt. That involved bringing in multiple dogs to sweep that building. Again, it was not easy. Most of you, both people probably don't even know what happened, but whatever else you wanna say about the woman, she came prepared to work and she did her best and that would have to salute.
You can see what you, what you...
We have a couple of cards from the audience. I'll call up first Ms. Emily Weeks, nine thirty-seven Avenue C.
Hi, um, my address is technically nine thirty-seven Avenue C., but if you check my iPhone, I'm actually in the auditorium at school so much that it tells me that's my address. As a member of the most recent graduating class of Bayonne High School, I'd like to extend my greatest thanks for a truly amazing fourteen years of education. When I first started pre-K at Harasman, I cried when my mom would drop me off, even though I lived so close to school that I could throw a rock from my front porch and it could land in my classroom. I can still picture Mrs. Golden dancing and singing around with us every morning to her record player, even though it was like two thousand and three. In the first grade, I discovered my love for math in Mrs. Healy's class, and in fourth grade, I learned that getting detention is in fact not the end of the world. In seventh grade, I joined the marching band here at Bayonne High School, and in eighth grade, I joined the cheerleading team at Harasman. When I was in eighth grade, I had a hard decision to make, where to go to high school. At the time, my heart was set on a future in music. "I do band," I would tell people. My love for music eliminated most of the private schools in the area, but that left High Tech, County Prep, and Bayonne High School. After looking at my options of over an hour bus ride or a five-minute ride with my mom every morning, my decision was pretty clear. I decided on Bayonne High School and attended the Academy for Fine Arts and Academics as part of the inaugural class. As I mentioned, I was part of the marching band already and I would thought, I thought that would be the extent of my extracurricular activities in high school. Looking back at that thought, I kind of just wanna laugh. Four years later, teachers in class made still joke, still joke with me about what my real major is in the academy. Depending on who you ask, you can even get different answers. Musical theater, dance, instrumental music, technical theater, STEM, I promise you, none of us really know. The academy has made me a fearless and well-rounded young woman. As I look to a future as a civil engineering major at Stevens Institute of Technology and start to panic about almost everything that could possibly happen, I also look back to the past and remember the lessons in responsibility, communication, time and stress management, and patience that my one thousand and fifteen service learning hours in theater have taught me. I look back and remember the lessons I have learned about stepping outside my comfort zone and about friendship. I look back and remember all of my amazing teachers and instructors I have had over the last fourteen years and remember how each and every one of them has impacted me so greatly. I am eternally grateful for every one of them. Whether you were my art teacher in kindergarten, my science teacher in fifth grade, my math teacher in eighth, or my independent study teacher senior year, I wouldn't be where I am today without your guidance and grace. And finally, I would like to thank Dr. McGinn and her staff for a wonderful fourteen years here in the Bayonne Board of Education. Your leadership has allowed me to experience life-changing opportunities and I wish you the best of luck in your future. Although this may sound like a goodbye speech, I promise you it's a merely, merely a see-you-later because I have to be here at eight fifteen tomorrow morning at door twenty-two to volunteer for the theater camp for Beauty and the Beast. Um, it's only, today was only day three, but it's looking pretty good so far, so if you guys wanna come, I promise you it's gonna be a great show. Thank you.
Next up, uh, Mr. Neil Granowitz, one twenty-three West Thirty-Fourth Street.
Good evening. I have two questions. First question is pretty easy. If someone wishes to be a financial benefactor to the Board of Education, does the benefactor have the option of earmarking the department or area that his or her money goes to?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe we do, 'cause I think there's...
Absolutely.
Scholarship offers to different departments, different areas of...
Right. And I know money's been collected for the, like, the weight room downstairs or the, yeah, so...
So it doesn't have to go to a general fund? It can be specific?
Yeah, Mark, yeah.
Thank you.
We just had a gentleman, I think, uh, Mr. Patel is here, uh, business, uh, they gave a three million dollar scholarship, but only for a certain subject.
Engineering.
The second question, I guess, goes through the chair to whoever the attorney is, I guess, Mr. Clark, okay. Can a trustee of the Board of Education also be a, uh, member of a local PTA or PTO?
I think so.
I have to be honest with you, I don't know the answer. I'll check for you and make sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have my address. You can, uh, mail it to me. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Anthony Dimico, seventy-three West Sixth Street.
Um, I just had a quick question. Now, when are we gonna see the rehire list for teachers that are being brought back?
We, at the moment, we have a, a, a meeting scheduled for July sixth and I believe that'll be the night that you'll see the, the list.
Is that gonna be like the final list or is it gonna be like the last one where it's only like sixty-something?
It'll be, uh, as, as final as it can be. What I mean by that, if, if after that we find out there's several, couple of people, and I'm not saying big numbers, two, three, that kind of thing because of the numbers in a classroom or something like that, but you'll see, it, the list that would be on this, July sixth would be the list that for all intents purposes would be the final list.
Mr. Broderick, may I address this?
Yes.
Uh, that's a very good question that you bring up, and in fact, it's, I've mentioned this before, it's like an elephant in the room, that this board rifted many people in the teacher ranks, way beyond what the budget was necessary to close. We have been working, not we, not the board, but behind the scenes, the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, the directors, the vice principals and principals, going over that list to see what would be necessary to bring back as teachers in this district with the empty classrooms. We have a list. The list could have been, could have been out last month. I was expecting it tonight. It's not tonight. Mr. Broderick has said it's guaranteed that it'll be on the sixth. I think, in all consciousness, that this was wrong to rift that many people. We didn't have to. It was unnecessary and it was done. However, I will take Mr. Broderick's word for it that on the sixth, we'll be coming back with a legitimate list to bring back teachers, somewhere in the one hundred range. I understand the plight of a teacher and what they're going through. Many of them have to make economic decisions. Do I lease my apartment again? Do I make a financial decision? Do I take a loan for the summer? Do I have a job? This could have been done and out of the way at least a month ago, but instead, we're going with July sixth. And hopefully, that materializes. Thank you, Mr. Broderick.
If you wanna come back up, sure.
If this was supposed to, if this could have been done a month ago, what's the holdup? Is it trying to get the new superintendent more involved instead of having the outgoing pick the future? And are, and are you taking names off of the list and just going based off of merit? Or is it still typical Bayonne with who you know is, who's coming back? Because I honestly, I, 'cause I mean, I honestly don't care who teachers know as long, if they're the best teachers, that's who I want teaching my kid. I don't want somebody who's friends with whoever's up there or anywhere else.
If, 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 if I can reply, the, the, first of all, why everyone was riffed, you know, as was said, as opposed to a list, was to give time to look and see, just what you said, who do we need, who are the best, and, uh, in the defense of that, many, many, many meetings have been held already, uh, by the current administration regarding speaking to principals, directors, vice, uh, seeing what we need and seeing who do we want. So, yes, that, that was being done. Uh, and, and also the new superintendent that's coming in has also been conducting the same meetings and with principals, directors, and, and all that. And hopefully, that's why we wanna come together, get the, the list that we think is best, not forgetting the financial aspect of this thing and how many classes do we need and how many teachers we have to fill. And the last thing that we'd like to do would be to, heaven forbid, bring back somebody and then, you know, a little while later say, "Oh, no, we really don't need that." That'd be, that'd be the most horrific thing I think we could do to these poor teachers. I mean, what they've gone through has been horrific. Uh, everybody up here knows that. Nobody up here wants to do what we did, uh, but we just, when we did it, we felt it was the fairest way and, and we're trying to go forward with that. Uh, I did make a promise that July sixth would be the date.
Yes, you did.
All right. Who, who has the final say on all that since Friday currently is out and you're giving a guy six days to do final...
Of course, it's a combination between the list that's made right now, the new interim superintendent's decisions, and of course, then the board has to make that final decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
My final card for this evening is Mr. Joe Wyatt, three oh one Maple Avenue, North Plainsfield, New Jersey.
I just have two questions. I just have two questions. One, what is the status of the, uh, retro payments? Are we going to get them or not? And when are we gonna get them?
Uh, well, Mr. Smith answered, but I, yes, we are.
Retro payments will be certified tomorrow for payroll. We will transfer them to the bank and they should hit, uh, the bank accounts twelve oh one AM on July third as promised.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for Mr. Pascal. Pascal?
Yes, sir.
You have repeatedly told us that certain things can be discussed here. I, I, I'm getting the impression that this board is getting like the last board. They don't, I'm not getting any response. There's no way to communicate, uh, our ideas. And so, I wanna know, okay, if we can't do it here, where can we have a conversation about our issues? I understand, and I understand from a, from a colleague, uh, from a friend of mine who is on a board, that this, this whole thing, while this is a, a open meeting, it's not for the purpose of having discussions. Everybody, except me, knows that it's just so the public can observe how the board works. Well, how can we get into the board some information or some ideas because you're getting your information from only one source?
But, but that's what the public comment period's for. Like you're commenting now and the board's hearing you. I don't follow your question.
No, but there's no discussion. There's no response. I submitted two letters a year ago. There has been no action on that letter. I have not received any comment, either dismissing it or accepting it or doing anything about it. No one has called me for consultation. It's the same process that goes on. You submit, I, I, I went to all the trouble to put it in writing and sign my name to it and give you my address. I exposed myself and you have the audacity to not respond to that letter in any way, shape, or form. And that really, I, I, what is going on?
But we, I, I, I know I personally responded to you at, at a meeting, at a private meeting.
No? Yes, but nothing has been answered, that letter has not been answered. There has been no discussion and no...
I, I understand what you said, but we did discuss it.
I know, but there's been...
And if, and if the answer you don't wanna hear is the one we came back with, that, that's, that's another story.
What answer did you come back with then?
Well, I know you discussed some, about the grades and, and all the time. We did discuss this and I discussed it with you.
I know, but you haven't refuted, you haven't refuted my argument or accepted it. I don't understand.
Mr. Wyatt, if I remember correctly, I had mentioned to you, almost every one of us read your letters and you can access any one of us through the website for the Board of Ed and all phone calls.
Well, no, I, I've...
Oh, let me finish, Mr. Wyatt, if you don't mind. And if I recollect, the last time you and I spoke, it was in regards to grade change and the grade change materialized.
I know.
And that was just one of the things that you brought to our attention.
But the others have not been responded to at all. I'm, I'm serious. I mean, if you want me to write another, send you the letter again, there's a letter about the, the, there's a letter about what are you gonna do about the minimum grade of fifty, which is destroying the integrity of the grading system and the students in this school. I got a kid that passed because I had to give her a fifty when she should have failed because she did, got a thirty-one. She didn't do anything in the last marking period.
Mr. Wyatt, did you discuss this with the assistant superintendent of curriculum?
Yes, I have.
You have?
And he said he was too busy, too busy to handle it.
I don't believe I said that to Wyatt.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I deserve a written reply, not just a verbal one. What, it hasn't been discussed. I know that hadn't been discussed.
Well, the last time I heard about that particular request, that was in, um, what committee, uh, Ms. Finnerty? What committee are you on, trustee?
Curriculum.
Curriculum, right? Curriculum did discuss that and I don't know what their findings are. Maybe perhaps trustee Finnerty could...
The findings were, I mean, I was in agreement with Mr. Wyatt, having had that situation where when you have the lowest grade that one could give would be a fifty, and we have very, very, very smart and crafty students. And it is true. You, you can sit in a classroom, come in, put your head down, and do nothing for the fourth marking period and you can pass for a year.
Third and fourth marking.
And it, it is, and that was one of the motivating factors to up the passing grade. However, it still is and will be until someone else changes it. Can't give anything less than a fifty. It is the grading policy as it exists now. I thought it was a great, great thing that happened, that we were able to bring back passing to seventy. Well, maybe next year, we can go that if a student doesn't do anything, the student gets exactly what the student gave. Right now, baby steps. We got the passing grade back to seventy. I don't know how we're going to get past the no grade lower than a fifty. I don't know how that's going to happen. It's right now, that is the district grading policy.
I understand it's the policy. What I asked you to do is change the policy and I gave you...
Right.
Chapter and verse, very detailed, uh, report about why you should do it and all you gotta do is do it. That's all you, you're the board. You asked...
Yeah, but I'm only one person.
What?
There are other people who have input in it. Just because you're on the board, it doesn't mean you make all the policy.
Oh, I, I know that, but...
It's a collaborative effort amongst a lot of people.
You know, I, I do, I do remember trustee Finnerty discussing this, actually at a workshop after your letter, after the, what is that? After the curriculum committee met, and we did say that we did return the passing grade from sixty-five to seventy. And I think it was felt at that time, if we were to pursue also the flooring, the grade flooring, would be too much in one academic year for culture shock for the students. So, so what like trustee said, uh, trustee Finnerty said, baby steps. This will be revisited.
I got no problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
You just didn't tell me, you didn't reply to my letter saying, "Thank you for the letter."
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Your three minutes is up.
You know what, Mr. Wyatt?
That's the, that's the other thing that's an affront.
Well, we have a three minute...
You don't allow, this is what I'm talking about, no discussion.
Mr. Wyatt? That's a fair assessment and you're right. I did not, I did not personally respond to your letter. I apologize for that.
But I don't require you to...
I understand that, but I'm telling you, I didn't as a trustee, so I do apologize.
That's it. Mr. DeAngelo, I think you have the final word.
Yes.
Can you please go up to the microphone now? Thank you.
If I heard you correctly, you said that the new prescription plan starts September first. Is that correct?
Mr. Smith?
Good question.
If we get our paperwork in by July one, there's a two-month wait. That's why the urgency to get this done is...
All right, let me ask you then this way. Will... Will the teachers have their new prescription cards in time to switch over seamlessly?
We will do our best to get everybody... We will do our best to make sure everybody that's enrolled gets the proper cards so they can continue with their pharmacy...
You've got to do better than that.
Well, it's pretty tough to do better than your best.
Well, your best hasn't been that good lately.
Well, no.
You know what?
Sorry, Mr. Smith.
No, well, my point was, and he didn't, he's doing his best. I don't know what that means. If you're going to switch prescription coverage, it's got to be done in such a way that someone's not going to be turned down when they need a prescription because it didn't switch over the same day. That's all I'm bringing out. When somebody says they're going to do their best, that leaves a little, his best, Mr. Smith's best might not cover it. That's all. I'm not picking on him. I don't want a teacher or a secretary not to be able to get a needed prescription. That's all. And I want that put in place before you switch. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Mr. Carr?
Alan, when the representative of Fairview made their presentations, in each presentation, they assured us that they've gone through this in other districts, and in fact, they gave us a list of those districts, and I'd be happy to share that with you. It was done during public session, and they assured us that there would be a very smooth transition. So when Mr. Smith says his best, it's the best of the organization that we've retained to do this. And based on diligence that we did to see what their success has been in the past, they've been very successful. So can we guarantee that there's not a computer flaw or something like that? That's impossible to do. We see them in every sector of our life today, but the expectation is that it'll be seen.
Thank you.
There's a motion by trustee Cruden. There's a second by trustee Lawande to return on that motion. And second, trustee Cruden, trustee Desmond, trustee Finnerty, trustee Garland, trustee Lawande, trustee Munoz, trustee Ryan, vice president Wilbeck, president Broderick. It is 9:09.